Just on schedule meetings. Can we talk about the handoff of schedule? Yeah. I'll move to the general mail. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
In everybody's favor, selecting minutes. Everyone have an opportunity.
Yep.
So we're going to look for more sessions for regular sessions from 13:15 and 19. Second. All those in favor?
Aye. Executive session number nine, 2020.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We'll move on to the warrants and commitments.
I move to affirm approval of the following warrants and commitments. Vindal warrant number 47 for $225,165, sorry, $85.60. Hamlet's commitment, $30,281.75.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye. I move to approve the following warrants. Taylor warrant number 45, 48 for $383,364.25.
I can give you accept the second except for if they've called 09, 12, 10, 12, 11, 12, 14 is another one there. I blew their six that I can't do. Well, let's move to the second, the ones that are not included. School warrant, I have those numbers, I can do those for.
Okay. Are there six that I can't not do? Or five?
I know the numbers change with the course of every, anyway, you know what I mean?
School warrant number 49 for $186,337.66.
Second.
Vindal warrant for $71,480. And withholding warrant number 51 for $141,366.64.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I move to approve the following, select bill dated the number 24, 2020. Second. Have complete presentation.
You want us to back it up? Is your pen in the meeting? Better numbers.
Is it just one bill, Troy?
Did.
One. Did you second that?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Well, through that, we'll come back to some of the other bills. And we'll move on to general mail.
Just a few things here. You have the testing program for employees that's going to start up next Tuesday. They'll have a base on the first and the eighth and ninth and third here in the current fall. Do you want information to come out? And people sit in through the fire department for that. So is this a second one?
No, but the power's not on for the next one. Oh, yeah. Yeah, what happened? Great, nice to know.
Ah, I think we're on now. Sorry about that, guys.
Well, at least we've got power. It's turned off for 15 minutes. 6:45, it's been pushed off. Can you test if I'm talking, can you see anything there on the board or? Yep.
Okay, and you can get me?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right, thank you. For all of those who are out there who thought you were losing your hearing, you weren't. Our mics weren't powered up. You didn't miss anything too exciting. We were just moving on.
Start the mail. The fire department's going to be running a testing program for town employees on the first and the eighth. It'll be here at town hall from 9:00 to 3:00, and employment's going to be made through the fire department. This is sort of a soft opening to see how well we can do a testing program at this scale. I know that the chief is looking at the possibility of doing something a little bit more significant. If that comes to fruition, we'll get information out. We did have two more cases today, and I've sent a note out on that. Just, I guess it's a general reminder, I mean, the basic stuff. Wash your hands, wear a mask, try and reduce the number of interactions you have with the number of people. There's plenty of advice to people about Thanksgiving and everything, I'm not going to go through that. Everybody has to make their judgment about that. But there's a lot of advice about how to be able to, in fact, be able to celebrate the holiday, and I hope people will take advantage of that. Recycling abate, so legal cases, there's no report. Recycling abatements, do we have anything before the board for tonight?
There is one, Joey. You have the, uh, 1960 case. You have the roof pickup.
Yeah, that's. That's when we started to discuss and then wanted a little more information. This is the one, I believe, that has reference to a house that was condemned by our public safety officials three years ago, and that was the Towns doing. And clearly, there has not been anybody residing in it for those years, which would be fiscal 19, 20, 21.
Make a motion to abate.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there anything else outstanding?
Um, is it related to that? The motion to Tom.
From town council.
Okay. Pope's Tavern Roof Project, I don't know if the board brought this up. Yes, they are going to be going to, I'm hoping, starting next week. I'm not sure if the materials are now on schedule for arrival or not. But they're going to be doing this in two parts. They're going to work for this late fall into the winter, the structural work, and then the rubber membrane on the outside of the roof will be installed in November and December. In the spring, the contractor returns to install the actual shingles and the foam insulation in the attic. They're weighing on the foam and then also for the shingles because the foam needs to be applied when we have certain temperatures. Anything below that, it's not as effective.
Yeah, there has to be a temperature in the vessel that's producing the foam. One of the things I thought about after we had our brief discussion about it was, everybody was included in that except the building department. I think somebody should run it by the building inspector as well, because there are some problems with not shingling it. So they should at least all be on board.
I'll have Scott contact Rob.
Yeah.
So Tom did bring up a point about the UV.
Right.
On the. Which?
Yeah, I was wondering, and that's one of the reasons I wanted to involve the building inspector. The ultraviolet rays from the sun tends to deteriorate a lot of roofing-type materials, and I wasn't sure exactly, and I didn't have a chance to research it myself.
Yeah.
If that would break down any of the.
The rubber membrane?
Yeah, it's roll roofing is what it is. Or ice and water.
On the fieldstone, horse, fieldstone farms, horse shows nothing has come in. Revocation and non-renewal hearings. Letters were sent out to Davis Automotive, and they, because they're in arrears on their taxes. What I'm recommending is the board set up a hearing date for Monday, December 14th, depending on what the board's schedule is for December, but somewhat ever appropriate date. But hold off on saying the letter out at least until next Monday, the reason being that Davis Automotive said that they were going to be coming in tomorrow to either get a payment plan enacted or either pay what they have in arrears. So if the board could vote to schedule the revocation non-renewal hearing for the 14th or whatever appropriate date, and then, but hold off on that until we see what happens tomorrow.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Similar letter went out to the country club. They did end up paying their pass-through water and personal property bills. They didn't pay what's called a real estate non-compliance fee, which is generated due to the failure to file necessary forms with the assessors on time. My guess is that the license owner's going to claim that this is the owners of the property who are responsible, not the actual country club, which technically is leasing the property. It's about, I think, $250. It's up to the board whether they want to pursue that or not.
So the country club corporation is leasing from a different entity, and that entity didn't file.
Right, right. And this is, on an annual basis, businesses require to file an income approach. Income and expense account, expense report.
Okay.
Based on taxation being, you know, either the value of the property or the value of the business. If they fail to do it, now, this is Department of Revenue regulations, they're charged a fee. It's like 250 bucks, but I think that's what you said. So they didn't do that. It's a little complicated because, to what Charlie alluded to, it's the owners of the property who pay the actual property tax.
And the owners indisposed at this time.
So is this the same fee as when somebody came in last year? Or he was behind in taxes?
No. No, no, that was just taxes.
Yeah.
I think we should ask him to come in.
I do, too. We hold other people's feet to the fire for this.
So everything's out there?
I'm good with that.
So is it no problem? Revocation hearing be held then?
I agree.
Okay, so if somebody would move in second.
I'll move that we hold the revocation hearing for.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And we'll get a date once we all tie clock scheduling. Matron appointments, the police chief is recommending Amanda Fayhury and Janice M. Hayward as matrons.
There was one.
I believe the board is familiar with both individuals.
What, there are three?
Were there three?
Just the two. Just the two. Okay. Or does that bring it to three?
Don't bring it to five.
Five, yeah, okay.
I move that we follow the police chief's recommendation to appoint Ms. Hayward and Isfaherty.
Second.
I agree. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous.
Next is Old Colony Plant Council Climate Change Vulnerability Transportation Assessment. Old Colony Plant Council's looking for input about, from communities, about current and future challenges, issues and problems due to climate change relating to transportation. I did pass this along to Steve Hayward, but I did send a note back to OCPC mentioning the following, which is that we have the periodic flooding in South Halifax, especially on the wind at Tuxa Crossings. We get several days of rain that the rivers obviously rise. The wind at Tuxa actually has a fairly large watershed in South Halifax, and it's fairly flat. So if it does all rise, a fair amount of the area, including the crossings, gets flooded over. I know there've been occasions we had road closures down there. Similarly, we've had problems at the flooding of the railroad bridge at Aldana Road and Oak Street, because again, that's a low spot. It's actually right in the path of the pipeline from Mount Pontapod over to Silver Lake. Not that the pipeline is causing the flooding, it's not leaking or anything like that, but the pipeline took advantage of the natural low spot also, that's why it's there. And then, I also mentioned, especially when we had the occasion about five or six years ago now, where we had a series of snowstorms in January, where because of, there were material amounts in each snowstorm, and there were cold temperatures, with snow, we just ended up not being able to place anywhere. We ended up with a lot of one-lane streets, not so much many of the major roads. Maybe you could get a lane and a half or one and three-quarters, but a lot of our side streets were down to one lane. People had to do a little dance to so both parties could, somebody would pull over into the snowbank almost, and the other person could get by. And these are all transportation areas. I also mentioned to them, you know, just in general, for the cranberry growers, not that we have anything, I think, we can do for them, but if climate change happens, and in essence, the temperature belts change, they need freezing temperatures, for instance, more often during the winter for preservation of the crops there, of the plants. So I've sent all that in, but if the board has other issues that they want OCPC to know about related to climate change and transportation here in Halifax, I can forward them along. As I said, I notified Steve about this, and he'll be able to send anything in, too.
6:45.
Pardon?
6:45.
Yes, the 6:45 postponed to two weeks from now. The person who was coming in to, as a candidate for the council and agent, was not able to make it, and he's coming in on the eighth.
My first thought was, in the 45 years I've lived in the town, South Halifax has flooded. So it's almost, you know, kind of as usual. I think I've mentioned this several times, I can recall watching the highway department place a truck on the bridge down there at East Street, I guess it is.
Block it out.
We're sold one foot away.
Yeah, well, yeah, the truck could have actually. Yeah, I, I mean, I think climate change is a legitimate concern. I'm not sure what they're going to do about it.
Right, well, first you got to know what the problems are.
Yeah.
Are there any, I know the crossing in Hanson is always an issue where the train comes across. Is the crossing on 36 an issue?
From.
In front of the Dunkin' Donuts on 27.
Yeah, no, right. Yeah, that's pretty low in there, yeah.
Is any other areas of the railroad that, when it comes through Halifax, there any issues there?
Only under the bridge.
A low place.
Yeah, on Oak Street, the Oak Street Bridge.
Okay. If anybody comes up with anything, I can pass along. For Bud's Goods, which is the last thing on my list, talked to the board, I had it scheduled for 7:15, but it's not an appointment with them. If you want to talk about it now, we could do that. So just to recap what's going on. So Bud's Goods has a host community agreement with the town. The town, through the Board of Suckman, signed it back in February or March earlier this year. This is for the outdoor cultivation. They've come back and asked, could we expand or add other uses to the property under a new or revised host community agreement? These would be for indoor cultivation and also for manufacturing. The, so what they sent was a post, new revised post community agreement. It's been reviewed by Larry. He sent his comments back to them. They were in general agreement on that. There are two issues I wanted to make sure the board was aware of. One is that on the money. It's more and more readily apparent that basically we're going to see a stream of money for five years, and that will be it. If this was a retail store, that would be different. But given what we're getting from the Canvas Control Commission, given that, in essence, the expenses, the money the town is to collect have to have some resemblance to the money the town spends due to having Bud's Goods here. The first five years, it's a little gray. We probably, both sides would agree, fine, we're going to get our 3% of the gross sales from whatever operation they have there, minus maybe some expenses if they're buying stuff and manufacturing, so, but rule of thumb would be the 3%. At the end of five years, or even during those five years, we're going to have to have an accounting of the expenses for the town. And at the end of five years, if we don't show that we've been spending, as the money's been coming in, when it comes up for renewal or for a new agreement, I am sure Bud's Goods is going to point that out and say, we're not going to be willing to give you 3% of our sales anymore. So at best, after five years, you know, year 6, et cetera, we're just going to see a wash. That doesn't mean we shouldn't do this, but I want people's expectations to be that, you know, come five or six years from now, whatever income stream, revenue stream might be seen from this is going to disappear. Which means that if we go ahead with this, and they actually build a facility, we actually see money, that money should not go towards the operating budget. We talked about the idea of using it to help send money ahead of time, ahead of the schedule for our retirement assessment. The reason is, think of it as paying down your credit card bills, and you pick the credit card bill, credit card with the highest percentage rate, you pay that down first. In essence, we are, we're in debt to Plymouth County at the rate of, let's say, 8%. We only could get a percent maybe at the bank for having money in the bank.
Yeah, maybe half a percent.
Maybe half a percent. And that's one of the reasons why the board approved the fire truck purchase, paying upfront and getting the discount of 2.75%, because it was a good deal. We were in essence making money by sending it early. Similarly, with the county, if we can start sending money to the county early, that means we'll send a lot less money to the county later on during the 20s. But first, we have to see the money. But that whole discussion will happen if we actually see any money out, this actually gets done. But I don't want, you know, in terms of signing this, I think when, certainly I was looking at this two or three years ago, not sorry Bud's Goods, but I could see, oh, this is going to be great. We're going to get this constant stream of money. This would be wonderful. Well, I think we're going to, the faucet's going to be turned off in five years unless it's a retail store.
I think we have to proceed with that assumption. And I also concur with you about paying down some of unfunded debt. I always think about the landfill facility in a neighboring town, that the town used the money for operating expenses, and then the facility suddenly closed, and they were left with quite the deficit. And this would put it to good use, because that is a ticking time bomb for the town, the unfunded liabilities.
The other point that came up, and Len, in fact, was very good about pointing this out, is that they proposed a language in the new host community agreement that would change the definition or description of who was an adjacent neighbor along those lines. I looked at the same language Len did, and there is that change. It's, they changed it to 600 feet rather than listing areas along various streets.
They actually had a delineation at one time, right?
Yes, right. And my recommendation, having looked at it, and I asked them, you know, why did you make this change? Well, we think this is cleaner. Well, it might be cleaner for them, but it's less helpful for the people in the neighborhood. And my recommendation would be that if the board was going to approve this, they approve that without that change.
They still need to present us a new host agreement.
Well, they have.
Okay. But that change, that change is in.
This is part of the change. So that many, most of the change is related to the fact that they were going to be adding indoor cultivation and also manufacturing, and also eliminating the idea that automatically after five years, this contract is renewed, and that we'll continue to get the 3%. Those are the, those are the other changes that are specific, aside from this one here about the adjacent butters and the folks in the area. So this has already gone to council. Council bounced it back to them. So we're at the point, not that the board has to make a decision tonight, but the board could make a decision tonight, or it could decide to let it sit for whatever amount of time it wanted to. But I certainly don't recommend signing it with this change. I reckon, if you're going to sign it, agree to it, it would be without this change.
So we're there. So previously, we talked about asking them if they would run an order from one end of river to the other to connect it, and they said that they had really no reason to because they're doing an outdoor grow.
Mm-hmm.
I'm still of the opinion that the town would have some benefit to have that line extended out, and if they're going to have indoor growing operations, that they'd be required to use town water to hook up to some sort of fire extinguisher program inside the building so that there's no issue.
I think they're going to need spreadsheets, won't they? For some higher size, which is probably going to be 10,000.
7,500 square feet is the, I mean, they could put in a cistern.
But I, I'm thinking just from a town perspective, to have them extend the water line as part of the process, so that they, we know that they have access to town water if they're going to do an indoor operation.
Didn't they mention they were going to do wells?
Yeah, they said wells before, but it was only going to be out to a grow at that time. I'm just thinking that's a benefit to the town, have those pipes connected, so we don't have dead ends anymore. I'm in agreement that I don't want to change the.
Distance.
The, the language here for, to the adjacent owners.
I'm not sure we still wouldn't have a dead end, but.
Because I, I thought the line ran across the first bridge down Pratt.
Yeah, but these, these guys are going to be further up. Well, maybe they could come across there. I, I don't have the map in my head here, so I can't comment. I'm not going to comment anymore, because I might be totally wrong.
Well, what I can do is, you know, the board can, all this for two reasons. Want to get the information from Keith, but I can also check with Trinao, find out whether it's legal for us to put in that.
Yeah, that was kind of my concern.
And to make that requirement.
Because they could, they could easily say, use your 3% for that.
They probably will, yeah.
Yeah, I think it would be quite easy to say that as part of the cycle view, that town water and their indoor sprinkler system would be required, therefore that's an easily traceable cost that we count.
Yeah.
Goodbye, benefiting the whole area.
They could theoretically do the suppression anyway, even without the benefit of town.
Gentlemen, come on in, have a seat.
Hi, gentlemen.
Well, we're still working on another topic, but we don't want you to just have to stand on ceremony, but have a seat.
Is there a reason that we'd want to remove the automatic renewal?
Well, we don't, but they're, but the thing is, they're going to say, we're not willing to sign the host community agreement with the automatic renewal at the 3%, because with the way things are going, we're not going to get that 3%. In fact, what happened was, because of the changes with the Canvas Control Commission, they had signed an agreement with, you know, Larry had drafted, that called the community impact fee, I think, I don't know, it was prosperity fee or something like that, but basically, it was the same fee under a different name.
Right.
To avoid the idea of the state law of saying it's 3%, but it has to resemble the expenses that you're generating due to having the facility here. And we were trying, at that time, to get around that concept that we would not have, that the 3% would be far far more than the amount of money that we had as a expenditure.
You want to delay it?
Yeah, I'd like to wait.
Can we, can we ask for a copy of the water?
The map.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's why we're going to talk to Keith.
Yeah, we'll talk to Keith.
Yeah.
And then we should talk to council as well.
Yeah, so it's going to be at least two weeks, right?
Next, well, yeah, our next writer means the eighth, but, you know, we've got, you know, we're not going to meet Thursday, obviously. I'm not, this isn't on the agenda for next Monday.
Oh, well, we could, everybody's invited over to my house.
Uh, I'm not in your pod.
We want to talk about agendas, uh, some immediate.
So, but just simply saying that, you know, I think a reasonable time is the two weeks and waiting till the eighth, unless the eighth is going to be a scheduling problem, but.
Shouldn't be.
Yeah, I think that works.
Okay, so let's bump it to the eighth.
Okay.
Len, do you have anything else?
No, I think, I'm guessing you folks were talking about the removal of the CFI, or what was the second payment that they removed?
Well, yeah, so basically, after five years, the. Well, yeah, so basically after five years, the cut, the agreement would no longer automatically renew. And that eliminates, at that point necessarily, that we're going to get 3% because the 3% won't resemble the amount of money that it's costing us to have the facility.
Yeah. Now, the only other thing I noticed, I think that they put some language in there about manufacturing from other sources, which doesn't bother me at all. I don't know that they presented it that way.
Yeah, they, 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 you know, it's right, as you said, it's right there in the host community agreement that they might call it import from other facilities.
Yeah, that was the same, which again, it doesn't really bother me for presenting it either way.
Yeah, they did bring that up.
Very much.
Okay, so, um, I'll put on the agenda for the eighth. We'll try and get some answers in the meantime.
Need a vote on that?
No.
Very good.
So you have, you now have, um, your seven o'clock, which is High Hopes, which is looking to build a grow facility on Plymouth Street. And, and they do have copies of the presentation?
I have my, I found it.
Oh, okay. Do you have enough for everybody or? Thank you. Thank you. Pardon? I need copies of them, but that's okay. Yeah, that's fine. This as well, they, here's a new one, in color. So I know that you informally met with the board, um, a couple of weeks or several weeks ago, but you might want to reintroduce yourselves or.
Sure, sure. So I'm Russell Beaugharts and I'm, I'm the CEO of High Hopes. Uh, this is Jay, our, Jay Law, our CFO. And this is Jerry Mara, who is going to be running our cultivation division. And, uh, so we did a fair amount of, uh, reviewing of the, of Bud's Bud presentation. We found some interesting things in there in our research and some things that were, um, helped us, it helped us figure out how to do a presentation for you guys. One thing though, in the, you skipped to the, uh, the last page, which has the tables. It's hard to actually put this how it's going to work in a, in a table because the ultimate plan is to grow, is to have a cultivation and also have a dispensary. But considering where we are in our business, we can't put hard dates. We can only just put goals. And we also know that there's an interesting overlap that happens with cultivation and that it takes a lot longer to get a cultivation site. So it's actually possible that our second dispensary proceeds cultivation, even though we don't have any, uh, location or anything planned yet. It's just because of how long it takes. So I did my, we did our best to create a table that, what, that is a scenario, but it may not go down exactly like this. So in this scenario, the idea is that after one full year of operation, we were proposing that we, that we would give 3% of all of this, all of the yield that does not supply on our already taxed, uh, retail, um, venture over in Hope Dale. So in this scenario, we have 300, we would generate 750 pounds, for which 340 we would sell at a normal wholesale price. These numbers are relatively conservative because I feel like in the first year of operation, that $4,000, I mean, actually even more than that, um, in the going market that we're seeing. And then, and you can see in the second, third and fourth full year though, that the cultivation revenue disappears because now we're talking about the dispensary that's going to, that we hope to have here. And so it would be obviously bigger numbers, bigger, bigger everything. But cultivation would be not taxable because we wouldn't be selling to anybody, wouldn't have enough yield to sell outside or in stores. Does that all make sense?
Well, I guess the question, in my mind, the question would be, you're, you know, we just had it, if we, if you weren't vertically, um, with a row facility, retail facility, because you'll be selling, you know, it looks like you'll be selling to yourselves, to the retail facility elsewhere in Hope Dale, isn't it?
Well, we're not really selling to ourselves.
Well, for our purposes, you end up doing that because if we have two growing facilities and one doesn't have a retail store, but they both sell, both produce the same amount of crop, one of them is going to provide less income to the town than the other because what you're saying is we would not get 3% of the amount grown that you then get to Hope Dale and sell.
So what do you propose?
Well, I'm not proposing anything. I'm just saying that I don't know if it's equitable, that facility A that's growing, let's say, 750 pounds is going to be providing less revenue to the town than facility B that's growing 750 pounds.
Well, the other, the other way to look at this is, is you're getting $40,000 that you would have had before. You know, I mean, you, you, you're already getting taxed on, on, on that, on that cannabis, on the retail side.
Well, over in Hope Dale. Well, in Hope Dale you are. We're, you're, we're not, we're not going to see anything from the, what would be 410 pounds or whatever you're growing that's going to Hope Dale.
But we're not selling.
But you're, okay. I understand, I, I know you're not selling to yourselves in that sense because you're a vertical operation, you're one company. But you are, nevertheless, like I said, you're a growing, grow facility as far as the host community agreement is concerned. You're a grow facility, you're going to be raising a crop here. If we had a different facility that was selling it to some other party, not to itself, we would get a 3% on the gross value of the crop, on the wholesale.
Well, you know, here's the thing though. We're trying to start.
Yeah.
We're trying to get this done, you know? And we don't have, you know, we're trying to get a second dispensary here. And if we have a second dispensary in here and you're vertically integrated into this town, you still wouldn't be getting anything from the cultivation, you'd be getting from the retail, you'd be making more money anyway. So this is.
So what you're saying is we should defer our money until some future date that something may or may not happen?
No, but I think there's compromises we could make. For example, what if we did something, something to be down at 3%? Or maybe, maybe you defer it as though we have a second dispensary. And if for some reason we choose not to make our second dispensary here, then we would pay the difference.
I, I don't know if we could even do that, but I'm, I'm kind of leaning to Charlie's scenario here. We'd be treating everybody differently.
Or the board checks what the Canvas Control Commission says, okay. Cause I suspect you're not the only company that is vertical. So what I would be, you know, what might happen is we check with the Canvas Control Commission and say, hey folks, there, there must be other facilities or companies that are vertical within one community or vertical in several communities. What does the HCA look like in those communities? What is the 3% generated against? Is it the wholesale, the entire amount of wholesale? Is it a partial, but not, then the retail is over here? How do the, how do these HEAs, how are the HCA structured? And you know, if there are, is basically precedent already in other communities, that's something that we could look at.
Okay. Well, we can look into that. So I guess we have some more homework to do.
Or we do too.
Yeah, I was going to say, we also.
Or it could be a different compromise where you agree to, to the whole amount that's being grown there at a different rate.
Well, that's, I think that's what he was alluding to.
Rather than being the $4,000 per pound being some agreed upon price for whatever timeframe.
Or, or it doesn't have to be.
We want to make everybody aware.
Or it doesn't have to be 3%.
Yeah.
Right, no, I think that's what he was alluding to though.
The model that Bud's uses is, uh, they were $1,700.
Very, very high.
So they're going to be selling for $1,000.
Correct.
So do you want to use that, 1,700, that 3%?
Cause that's less money.
Yeah, that's less money than that offer.
So the, the agreement, I believe, was supposed to be based off of some, uh, online, you know, sales, uh, it's not a sales board, but like an exchange. Like what, what's the wholesale rate exchange? And it was supposed to be based off of that. But I think you're right, 1,700 was the number that they showed us.
1,700 for the first year, I think it was a little less the next year. And that makes sense that it does go down, but 1,700 sounds, I would be thrilled to see $1,700 a pound right now.
And, and I think that that had to do with their model because they were looking at paying to grow that one operation, paying the processing in Lakeville, and then selling, I think in Worcester. So I think that they had different price points. Basically, there was a wholesale market, then there's their processed market, and then what they're selling in retail.
So how's that, how's that different sort of than what I was, like, that seems like they're getting a great deal compared to what I'd have to do, what you would have done.
I, I think it comes down to the business model that you presented.
But.
Because if you sold.
If it's not fair, right, I could, I could, I could give you an elaborate business model of how all of these things are being allocated. But that doesn't justify me having to pay a higher rate than them.
But I think Charlie's point is we want to treat you guys the same.
Same, right.
Well, if you want to treat us the same, well, we'll do 1,700.
Well, except the 1,700 is not in the host community agreement. There's no mention of the specific amount. It will be, as Gordon said, I believe, on some, based on some sort of index.
So in the impact, in the HCA, what do they have? What is written there? Is it 3%?
It's 3%.
That one we saw.
I, the, the.
Charlie, are we discussing their ability to do work or are we just discussing the other?
We're, we're discussing both. But they are looking, saying, you know, what Gordon's mentioning is, and they're mentioning is what prices the Bud's Goods was quoting on a per, was a per pound level. And say, and High Hopes is saying that number seems very low to them in comparison to what they think the market is going to be. And what I'm saying is that the per pound amount that the 3% would be based on is not specifically mentioned in the either current or proposed HCA with Bud's Goods. It simply says 3%. It does not say 3% of 2,000, 3% of 3,000, or a specific per pound amount. But the, if you want to look, but I believe, you know, I believe I've sent you a copy of the HCA that we have with Bud's Goods. If you, if I haven't, it's online on the town's website.
It says, it says right here in this version of the agreement, the term gross wholesale, gross wholesale sales as used herein shall mean the total sales at invoice values not reduced by customer discount, returns, or allowances, or other adjustments except in the case that sales proceeds which are derived from marijuana purchased by Bud's Goods from OPMs and sold thereafter, the 3% payment will be calculated with respect to the gross wholesale sales less the amounts paid to the OPMs to purchase marijuana, provided that Bud's Goods provides evidence of a purchase price of such marijuana to the town. So right there, it calls out the 3%.
3%, what was, I'm sorry, I didn't really understand the, the condition there.
It, it says the gross wholesale sales. So it's supposed to be 3% of the gross wholesale. 3% of gross wholesale sales of the marijuana product included.
But relation to the other, the other entity, that's the part of the language that I would like to hear again.
Um, the term gross wholesale sales herein shall mean the total sales at invoice values not reduced by customer discount, returns, or allowances, or other adjustments except in that case of sales proceed, proceeds which are derived from the marijuana purchased by Bud's Goods from other OPMs.
By other what?
O, OPMs which are off-premise marijuana establishments.
So, so your, your interpretation of that is that they're going to pay, they're going to pay 3% of the wholesale price they get for any, in any exchange?
Cause the gross wholesale sales value attributable to such close transaction mean within the company shall be assigned a commercially.
What is the close transaction, what does that mean?
The gross, a close, meaning for instance, within the company, this division is selling the product to another division in the sense of, if you're allocating, if you're running a company, you're going to be allocating costs to each of your divisions. So a close transaction, meaning that if it's, you know, delivery distribution of marijuana product from marijuana establishment to another marijuana establishment owned or operated, controlled by Bud's Goods, or an affiliate of Bud's Goods, a close transaction there, that is. The gross wholesale sales value attributable to such close transaction shall be assigned a commercially reasonable fair market value as may be accepted and right in by the town and will be included in the CIF.
So if there's a commercial fair, fair amount.
Right.
That I, I would interpret that as being, if we sold 360 pounds to our other store, it would be, then we'd get the 3% at the market value, which would be $4,000 in this scenario. I'll need to talk to my lawyers and figure out, and then we'll do the, we'll do the, we'll do our own. And see how this is handled. And if, if this is the way it's handled, then.
Well, we don't have anything right now. What we've got is an agreement with Bud's Goods that they would like to see revised. Bud's Goods is not even, has, at least they told the board, they do have a provisional license. I haven't gone back to them. They have a host community agreement. They only informally talk to the planning board about site plan, review, and special perm. They're not up and running. We don't, you know, as much as we have a host community agreement, it's now one that they want revised. So while it's set somewhat in stone, there's nothing saying we can't take that stone out and move a different stone in there, through a different agreement. But I think, you know, we need to, we need to be known for treating anybody coming in here in the same path and not playing favorites.
Sure, that's, that's fine. So if, if we, the, the other, the other piece of it though is, if you were seeing, if we did it at Hallmark, it'd be the other thing. We found that the, what happens in the industry like that is that there is an notation in this, rather than a straight up 3%. Would that be something we'd entertain if we saw that precedent be happening? Or are you just saying, it doesn't matter, Halifax is doing it this way?
Well, it's up to the board, but again, I think what we'd be looking at is, I think by now there are a fair number of HEAs out there. I, the question's going to be is, what has been the tendency? Has it been more than not for the, aside from the retail stores, has it been a 3%? If it's been something else, I certainly haven't seen a lot of discussion with my colleagues that says that town X is doing two and a half, or town Y is doing one and a half. And possibly doing that in order to attract those businesses to that community in terms of, you know, business X is looking for a site. What can you, it's like, you know, and then, you know, same thing with tax credits or something like that. Because that's what it basically it is. You want industry in your town, what are you willing to quotation marks pay or not get by having that industry? Because you see, well, we'll get something out of it, maybe not as maximum as we could um, because there's this other community that's competing against us. But at this point, I don't know how much of that is going on in the sense of, you're certainly not telling us, and I'm not asking to tell us, that you're looking at three or four different other communities and this one is offering us to negotiate an HCA at two, or this one's at two and a quarter, or this one's at one and, one and a half. You know, what we look at probably is the finished product and say, let's look at the HEAs. Are they running at numbers other than 3%? I mean, a lot of the early ones certainly seem to be running at 3%. And a lot of them legally or illegally had a lot of nice asterisks on there. You're going to give $10,000 to this group or whatever. I mean, we're not fall river. And I, and I've committed to making sure we're not fall river. We're just doing it straight, here's a number, here's 3% that's what we're doing. We're doing something else, it's certainly not, nothing illegal. It's simply that we haven't, we have, we've had, what, one firm come in with $4,000. haven't, we have, we've had, what, one firm come in with four dollars, and they dropped out. This was more than a year ago.
Yeah.
We had Bud's Goods come in, we've done a three percent with them. We have you folks, we have a retail store that might be coming in, and we, no one, you know, it's always been three percent. If the market is saying that three percent is not the prevailing percentage anymore, that the number's a different number, then we're happy to listen as long as people can provide that information showing that it's no longer a three percent market, it's a two and a half, it's a two.
So, let me ask you this, uh, and the board, if we, it says in there, and we talked a little bit about this last time, if for some reason you guys felt that you couldn't justify the, the amount for the impact that it's supposed to be occurring in the town, what happens with that money?
Well, we, technically it goes to the general fund. I mean, it's gonna be interesting to see what the campus control commission does in terms of that three percent, set aside the retail stores. I mean, I, and I talked to the board about this earlier, is whether it's Bud's Goods or anybody else, at the end of five years, I don't see an income stream for the town outside of property taxes. That's gonna be it. At best, we're gonna get a wash. But I think whether it's you all or Bud's Goods, the impact on the town's gonna be minimal. We're not gonna be spending a material amount of money on expenses relating to police or fire or anything else because of a marijuana facility. We're gonna, Bud's Goods is willing to come in here and pay the three percent nevertheless. We're not gonna use it, surely I would hope not, I strongly recommend that we don't, for operating expenses, because that stream is gonna disappear at the end of five years one way or the other. I don't know, there's no indication yet specifically from the control commission or from the state that says, if at the end of five years, you have an accounting, and I'm making the numbers up, you've only spent ten thousand and you've got a hundred thousand, you need to give ninety thousand back to the vendor. There's nothing there yet saying that. Now, if, so we're gonna, both sides freely sign that agreement and said it's gonna be three percent. And yes, at the end of five years, Bud's Goods can come back in and have a new HCA, and I would fully expect for them to say, hey, you only spent ten thousand dollars, let's say. We, that's the number we're willing to pay for the next five years, or maybe on a per, let's say it's ten thousand per year. You're not gonna get a hundred thousand dollars anymore every year, which is why I'm assuming that income stream is gonna go.
Okay.
But, um, but for the first five, we're, you know, at least as far as I can see, Bud's Goods is going to be providing that income stream. Where it goes after that, or what changes the legislature or the control commission do, we'll see what's happening. I mean, they've got, I think, you know, there's legislation there up in Beacon Hill to make changes, but I think they've got a few other things that they've been more worried about than trying to get, you know, bring this to wherever direction they want to.
Okay. All right.
But the board can tell me, I'm actually, I'm not saying anything that the board would say.
The one question I had about the site is, is that the site that you'd be looking to have the dispensary at?
No.
Oh, originally, I think you were talking about the same site, right?
Yeah.
Did I do this misunderstanding?
Yeah, we're still investigating at the moment.
Uh, there's another business out front that's owned by the same LLC, and I approached the agents to see if at some point in the future they would want to sell it, to be second level. So, based on the logistics of it, where that location is now, it's tucked right behind the insurance company.
Yeah, and the building that's...
We don't think it would be ideal for you or for us to have a retail location, because of the traffic, because of the way it's set up.
It's too difficult to get in there now.
Yeah. Well, that's why we went back to this model of just putting the cultivation side.
We think getting a smaller cultivation is beneficial now, sooner, and if we need to either expand it or change its location, then we would, we would hope that you guys would, you know, obviously, we go to the proper channels and whatever it took, but it would ultimately be, you know, a benefit for town to do that. We might have the funds and the infrastructure to say, okay, well, we're ready to just sort of abandon this place, just move down the road, a lot, and put everything up and start everything there.
Or leave it up and running.
And then up and running, or maybe have both, because we could have to.
If it's working out well for you and for us.
Right.
Which, from your perspective, they'll be, I mean, it would be essentially like it is now. The most, at the busiest time of, of growing, if you have people on board, develop, turn the process, supply, the most you're gonna have are eight or ten employees in there at one time. The rest of the time, it's gonna be between two and four employees.
Is, is the owner still talking about a parking garage out there? Did he have any discussion with you folks about that?
He did not.
I, I think that came up deplorable, meaning that I watched.
Well, that's why I'm, I'm bringing it up.
No, we, we propose...
It's a relatively tight site, is what I was getting at.
Right, and all we need is a building, really. We don't need a parking lot, I know the setback goes out behind it, so there's really not a lot of room for expansion, as far as that goes. And what we proposed, as spoke to Rob, was leasing the property at first, because he has it up for lease for purchase right now.
Yep.
Um, he said, if everything worked out with you and with our plans, we extend that, and then we have an option to purchase the property, it would be, uh, probably two over a year.
Just out of curiosity, are you looking to use both floors? It's a, it's a two, two-story.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Um, I think what we should do is follow up, do our research. If you want to provide some research, and maybe we reschedule another meeting and try to talk this out again.
Sure.
If that works for everybody. Does anybody have a different scenario?
Once you're, I feel confident that we will get to a place where we would be, like, we'd be finishing our talking by the next meeting. When is your next meeting?
December eighth, I believe, is what we were just talking about.
We can, we can, we will figure out a way to make this work one way or the other.
I think two weeks gives us an opportunity too, to do some research as well. Not that Charlie doesn't have enough to do already, but...
Let's, let's plan on that, Ben, and, uh...
While we're here, can I ask just one more question? Aside from what we were just discussing with the numbers, do you have any other concerns about us right now, so if we do need to do some more research and address some of the questions?
The only thing that's come up to me several times by different people is the odor issue. And I think at one point, you might have maybe, maybe overstated that there would be no odor, I don't know that that's a possibility. Uh, I think this site is not residential, at least, so that that aspect of it is kind of removed.
And the fact that it's tucked back away on the far side of Walmart's parking lot off the shop probably helps as well.
The papers at Walmart are like...
It's no odor, someone opens the front door, but as far as anything that's expelled, and basically, the only thing that gets removed or brought into the building is fresh air that's enclosed. He issues the lights. Lights can throw off heat, so the way they set up is very enclosed, so the heat stays contained, and they're not compromised by the air of the facility. You bring in cold air, set out hot air. Other than that, throughout the facility, there's large parking filters that draw in air and remove, you know, most if not all.
Yeah, I'll submit it with the building.
So, the only question would be, that would be the apartment, right?
Yeah, yeah.
But that's where he's talking about building.
Well, that's, that's why I asked, and that's gonna have to be handled at a, at a planning board, when you do a site plan review. I don't know how tight it's gonna get out there, because you're gonna have some vehicles coming in and out of there too.
That's the building.
Product, right?
That's the...
In addition to...
Yeah.
People working there.
Yeah, you will, and you're looking at it probably once or twice a month. Um, cycle runs around every six weeks, so in those six-week periods, it would just be regular cars, as you mean, if you're in, um, just two weeks, small lots, lots, and everything set up. So there wouldn't be a lot of cars in the parking lot.
Well, again, I think the planning board's gonna have to look at that when we do a site plan review anyway, and if he in fact is looking to do the, the parking garage out there. Now, when I say parking garage, I don't, I'm not, I don't believe I'm talking about a multi-story building here, I think a garage that parks the vehicles of his own, I believe. But anyway, it's all gonna have to be taken into consideration with a site plan review.
I mean, it's in our best interest to make sure that there's no odor escaped in the building as well, simply because we don't want to draw attention to that facility.
Right.
Because it's bad for us, it's bad for you, someone, you know, we don't want to broadcast that, so...
Well, it's definitely...
That's gonna be our biggest concern, how the, you know...
It's definitely tucked away over there. How many square feet is that building?
Twenty-eight hundred.
Um, the, the listing says thirty-one hundred, the tax record says it's over twenty-six hundred, so, you know, as we issue sometimes this space that goes out.
Yeah, well, you're not even close to anything requiring suppression unless there's something specific to the product, but, so, that's all I was getting at.
So if you guys grow on two floors, that's enough space?
Um, for now, we believe so, yeah.
It's not, look, it's not ideal, it wouldn't be great if there was more space, but, but we, it's a, it's a good deal for us in terms of just, like, getting a place, securing a place, it's a relatively small commitment of money, and, you know, again, we're just...
You don't have to build anything, it's a one thing.
That was, that was the drawback, was that we don't have to start from here, we don't have to clear the land, we don't have to build structure, and you for all that. It's basically ready to go, and there we go. There's some alterations probably inside, no much other changes, we need to make sure the leakback system is up to snuff with what we need, and basically try and make it as energy efficient as possible.
And the security too.
The security, obviously, we have to follow the state guidelines, the CCC guidelines, which should be more secure than that.
Well, at some point, I'd, I'd wanna see, you know, some detail on your HBAC. I assume you have to have some kind of scrubbers in there.
So what we do with our dispensary, we had our, you know, professional architects do the whole draw, have a site plan made, and, you know, contractor, we're working with a contractor now, and getting all the details needed from the building permit, so this is all stuff we would all, of course, be able to see well in advance, that we actually believe they have.
Well, unless anybody has anything else.
I think they should check in with the planning board too, in the next, try to get on their agenda for the next meeting, so you guys can, because that, because on that site, they're talking about that building, so that would interfere with spacing wires possibly.
Where are the buildings?
In the back.
Yeah, behind the insurance building.
Behind it?
I don't have any details on the size of the building or what he's gonna do, so I, I just knew that it'd come up, and so I, I'm just throwing it out there as to be aware of. And he may abandon that plan based on maybe now doing something different.
We, I haven't looked into detail as to how the two properties would be lined up if you were selling one and not the other, because the way it seems now is that they're set up almost in condo situation.
Well, he, my understanding was, and please don't take this for, you know, as an absolute, that it was condominiumized originally, and then when the other building was up for sale, he ended up purchasing it, so it may still be in that status of a separate deed or separate holding.
Yeah. It means it says that it's a share, it says that it's a shared subject system, it's shared expenses for power, otherwise it's just...
He may have reconverted it, I, I, you know, that's between you and him.
Yeah, just one more question, real quick. So, let's say we get to, we could achieve our goals, and our goal's being, building that dispensary, right? Would we not, would we, would we be okay just doing the three percent and not doing this, but we still need to pay the three percent of cultivation that goes to the other store as well, on top of that, on top of the three percent for the dispensary?
Two separate, I mean. If you in fact have the dispensary and only provide to that dispensary, is that what you're saying?
Well, so when we get zinged on the stuff we send to Oakdale from here, as well as our dispensary, but the stuff that goes from our, is that what you're saying? And then the stuff that goes from the cultivation to the dispensary here and now, like, well, you're, you're already getting a retail on that, so you're not gonna zing us on that?
I think that's...
It's part of the question that we have, and it's an essence, it's an adjacent question to the first part of the discussion.
Go ahead.
And I don't have a straight answer for you, other than, again, you know, we're looking at growth, yeah.
We can do some research, too. You already mentioned facilities that were vertical in different towns, we can look into how it's set up.
Yeah.
I would imagine that if they're in the same town and it was the same entity, that they would say, we go in here and we sell in here and you get three percent. But I'm not sure of, I mean, we could definitely...
On the table that you have here.
Yeah.
For instance, the second year, you have dispensary revenue of nine million dollars, and the three percent is two seventy, right?
Yeah.
What numbers were used to come up with the nine million?
Well, we're thinking that we, that this location has a very good chance of doing...
No, no, but you have, for, you have a yield, seven hundred and fifty pounds, and then you have a price per pound of thirty-eight hundred.
Right.
And usually...
This is, but the thirty-eight hundred here, really, you don't even need that there, because really, this is, the second year, third year, is, is assuming that we have a dispensary in place.
Right, no, I understand that, but you're gonna be selling seven hundred and fifty pounds, seven hundred and fifty pounds of marijuana.
If it's sold in retail, it will not be thirty hundred.
Okay, that's, that's where I'm going, yeah, okay.
And the flowers, it's part of the, what we're selling, you have flower, cool, edibles.
Okay, yeah, because the reason I was asking is, the first year, it's clear, thirty-four, three hundred and forty times four thousand yields the one million, three hundred and sixty, and then the forty thou...
Yeah.
But it's not clear, I mean, basically, the, we, it's almost as if there's no growing. All we, all we're looking at is the revenue sales of the store, where, and for our, for our purposes, you may not even be growing it, you may be getting it from someplace else. I'm not saying you will be, but in essence, all we're gonna care about in terms of revenue picture is that you have nine million dollars of sales. It doesn't matter what the price is, it doesn't matter how much you sell, just that we have nine million dollars of sales. So the nine million dollars has no relation to the other numbers that are here.
Exactly, it's a distracting figure.
Okay.
Yep. I, but I, at the same point, I wanted to illustrate that this is gonna change over time.
Yeah.
So, for example, if you take, if for some reason you didn't have a dispensary here, for whatever reason, then you'd still have some kind of indicator of what price is gonna have over, over time.
Okay, I think we have our marching orders, right? Ours, yours, everybody's?
Really appreciate your time, and we'll never find a way to get there.
Thank you, we'll, we'll see you on the eighth.
Yeah, we'll get it, we'll get it, I'll get a time set up, I'll talk to PM, and we'll get a time set up, and I'll contact you.
Have a happy Thanksgiving. Yes, have a nice holiday.
Everybody be safe, stay safe.
We'll do our best, you too.
PM, do you have anything else for the board?
No, I could consider, um, um...
Skateboard, yeah.
It was five that I didn't sign, it looks like, so those are the five.
And then to talk about the skateboard.
So, what are we doing with that?
So which boards are you not, you're gonna...
That's payroll.
Yeah.
So I didn't sign those ones, and then I just needed to see if there's any law lines.
Okay.
So, we're talking about needing a motion, Troy, for twelve oh nine, twelve ten?
Okay, twelve oh nine, twelve ten.
Twelve eleven, twelve twenty-four, and twelve fourteen.
Twelve twenty-four and twelve what?
Fourteen.
You guys are on the list, okay, see that. Um, so keep up with...
I'll move them, if Troy will second them.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry? Gordon, how do you want to be listed for these?
Except for Hughes, I, for Hughes.
Yeah.
So you clearly thought of that, okay.
And that's it?
No, I know you all want to talk about skate.
Oh, yes, right, that's right.
So, Tom, Tom brought it up, so...
Don't blame him, go ahead.
No, it's okay, because I did.
He brought it up, and I said, yeah, that's a good idea.
Yeah, yeah, had I not mentioned it, he would have mentioned it, so it, it worked out.
Um, the one thirty twice a week is getting very onerous for all three of us, isn't it? So, is there a way that we could do a three o'clock on Thursday and skip the Monday?
I think that's what we'd like to do.
Okay.
Three o'clock is better, because it... 3 o'clock is better, because it, it doesn't interrupt the entire day, and it still leaves enough time for the, um, other folks to join us.
Let me look at the 30th right now, I did post, um, yeah, I don't see anything here that can't be moved to a meeting on the 3rd at 3:00 PM.
I think that would work out much better for everybody, although it's nice to get some things done-
Right.
Prior to our regular meeting, but at the same time, it's becoming problematic for everybody.
Well, and obviously, you know, if not, if something occurs and the board needs to meet, then the board's going to meet.
Yeah, right, exactly, yeah. So having said all that, I guess we'll entertain a motion to adjourn?
So, so, just so the board's clear, we are not meeting this coming Monday, the 30th. The next scheduled board meeting right now will be December 3 at 3:00 PM.
Right.
And then from then on, it'll be on Thursday, so the 3rd, the 10th, the 17th, at 3:00 PM, no more Monday meetings.
Correct.
And we are meeting December 8th, the normal evening.
Yeah.
That through the COVID era.
Yeah.
It just, it's been too many years.
Yeah.
Well, it's also a burden on, on our staff, because there's a tremendous amount of minutes being-
I'll be honest, I'm just tired of seeing your face all the time.
All right, on that note, can we get a motion to adjourn?
Troy made it, I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everybody, have a good Thanksgiving, stay safe.